Good evening, everyone. The Wensocket School Committee meeting of Wednesday, August 9, 2023, is now called to order at 7:00 PM. Dr. McGee, roll call, please.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Here.
Mr. Leclerc.
Here.
Will you please join me in standing for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now we'll go into good and welfare. And so for anyone addressing the school committee this evening during good and welfare, please begin with your name and address. Your comments shall be no more than five minutes of speaking time and should be in good decorum. Please be aware that the committee cannot respond to you during good and welfare, but may direct you to an appropriate member of the administration team or may meet with you directly after the meeting for further discussion. Does anyone want to address the school committee this evening? Please come to the mic, please. State your name and address.
My name is Holly Hong, and my address is 65 Jervis Street, Wensocket, Rhode Island. I'm basically here tonight because my daughter misses the kindergarten cutoff by nine hours, and she's extremely advanced. She's reading, writing, doing math, and I'm very concerned that if she cannot go to kindergarten this year, she'll be way too advanced to go next year. So I've been in contact with the Commissioner's Office. They said I should come in and, you know, inform you of what's going on. I did send you an email, Chairman, and I do have a appointment scheduled with Patrick McGee for September 17th. I have to meet with him in person, and he has to tell me that. He's not making any exceptions, and then I can appeal to the Commissioner's Office. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing and hearing none, we'll go into recognitions and announcements. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I am very pleased this evening to introduce Ms. Sharon Kitchen as the new Director of Human Resources and Labor Relations for the Wensocket Education Department. Ms. Kitchen joins us with over 30 years of experience in human resources and 16 of those years in the public sector. Most recently, she served as Human Resources Coordinator for the Pawtucket School Department. During her time there, she helped develop both substitute and employee handbooks, helped implement Munis HR Module, developed a standard workplace investigation process, developed a progressive discipline process and performance correction form, as well as all other human resources functions. Ms. Kitchen holds a bachelor's degree in human resources management from Rhode Island College. Based on her record of accomplishments, I am very pleased to announce Ms. Kitchen for the position of Director of Human Resources and Labor Relations in the Wensocket Education Department, and she is here this evening. She's standing right there. So Sharon, welcome. Looking forward to working with you. I'm sure you're going to fit in nicely with our team here, and can't wait for you to officially start.
Welcome.
Welcome.
I can't say Wensocket is very unhappy to lose you, but I am very, very excited for Wensocket.
Great. Welcome.
Welcome.
Very good. Keep going, more.
I do. I have one more. Next, as we're not there yet, but we're getting close, closer to the start of the 23-24 school year, so I just wanted to announce some dates, some upcoming dates in August. On August 21st, our New Hire Teacher Orientation Day is scheduled, and that is going to be here at Hamlet Middle School. On August 22nd, we have our New Paraprofessional Orientation Day. The first day of school is August 30th, which is for students in grades 1 through 9 and kindergarten students whose last names begin with the letters A through L. August 31st is the first day for students in grades 10 through 12 and kindergarten students' last names beginning with the letters M through Z. On August 28th, that is the District Orientation Day, which will be held at Wensocket High School. And on Tuesday, August 29th, that will be our Professional Development Day. And I've been meeting with the Wensocket Police, our resource officers, our principals, Mr. Notariani, Dr. Holt, and others, because we're going to be utilizing for the secondary schools. Our Alice training is going to be scheduled for that PD Day, and the morning of that PD Day will also be spent with our elementary teachers and staff around the Alice overview. Their training is going to follow the following week, because we have to, because it takes time. We can't train the entire district in one fell swoop on that day. So, but we'll begin that Alice training on the first PD Day or the only PD Day on the 29th. So with that, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, that concludes my recognitions and announcements.
Any questions for Dr. McGee? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the July 19, 2023 open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Do we have any changes to the minutes? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Now we'll go into the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Any committee member want to address any item within it?
I just do have a question.
Vice Chair Burke.
Okay. I just see listed here, Mr. Perrier, three times, social emotional consultants. Could you just explain where that position came from? I know it's S of Funds, though it's not local, but it struck me as something I've never seen before, so.
Well, these people, we've actually hired every year for the last three years, so this is not a new addition to the budget.
It's not.
Yeah. These are the same people that we have hired year over year. I think we brought them in at the beginning of COVID. You correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that was the timeframe, and we have been carrying them since then. So these are not new additions in any way.
I guess I never noticed it before. I apologize.
No problem. Any other questions, comments? Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Dr. McGee, would you give us your superintendent's report?
I certainly will, Mr. Chairman. This evening, I just want to talk a little bit about personnel matters updates. As the committee is aware, the district has been very busy in filling vacant positions. To date, we have filled approximately 20, 17 positions in the district, and we have, I'm sorry, we filled 22 approximately positions in the district, and we still have approximately 17 positions left to fill. So our principals and our staff directors are working hard to fill as many of those vacant positions as we can before the start of the year. I know they've been very busy, so they've made quite a bit of progress.
Okay.
And I know that there are even some today that could have made this list, but when, you know, this list was created, it was earlier today. So there are even a few others that we can add to the filled list, which I'm happy about. But we're getting there.
All right. Any questions for superintendent? Mrs. Costa.
I don't have questions for the superintendent, but we skipped over field trip conference request and homeschooling request on the agenda.
That's part of the consent agenda.
Oh, I thought that.
That's included in all of that.
Oh, okay. I apologize. It was just out of order when I was looking at the agenda.
It's okay, but you voted for it.
Can't take the vote back.
I can't, no. I just, I.
Very true. But I'm glad you mentioned it. Anyone else for the superintendent? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a superintendent's report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Vice Chair Burke. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Next, we'll go into the subcommittee reports, and I'll ask Mr. Notariani to talk, give us an update on the building capital update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this past Friday, August 4th, at 1:00 PM, and again today at 4:00 PM, the Building Committee met to consider and review several building scenarios as presented by the Rhode Island Department of Education. The Building Committee, after a very robust discussion, both on Friday, again today, along with some submitted questions to RIDE, has made a recommendation to review Scenario 1 with the school, well, all scenarios, but a recommendation of Scenario 1 for this evening, which I think, rather than getting into right now, it might be wise to consider moving up the agenda to look at item number one under new business.
So you'd like to do this right now?
Yes, we'll consolidate all at once. We have, oh, I'll turn them on in a second here, but we have Mr. Russ Hoffman and Mr. David Sweeney.
Is there anything else you need to discuss regards to building capital update? Or is that going to be, we're just going to file?
Nothing, Chairman. I think it'd be wise if we'd have the entire conversation all at once to discuss and then decide if you want to move forward or not.
Well, let me make a motion to accept to approve the building capital update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Mr. Leclerc, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll make a motion to move up in the agenda. Right now, the first item, new business, which is discuss and approve the P3 project sharing scenario. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. Turn it over to you, Mr. Notariani. Or Dr. McGee, or whoever wants to take it.
So I think, well, just to, again, Russ Hoffman's on the call with us today. Mr. Sweeney, David Sweeney, are going to join us from Civic Builders, and the Department of Education has been working through with both RIDE Prep and the Wensocket Education Department to come up with some scenarios to build some type of a joint venture project with schools here for the district. So in your folder this evening and linked into your agenda, there is a presentation from RIDE, and I apologize, Kiliya Kenter from RIDE is here as well to answer any questions regarding the scenarios that have been moving forward through the Building Committee. And I'll, Mr. Perrier wants to add in. I know you've been on the calls on Mondays, but basically, Scenario 1 in your packet envisions a joint venture, I believe, at Dunn Park, and it would be something that shares, I believe, foundation and utilities, and it's what the Building Committee moved forward to the school committee this evening. I will welcome Kiliya, if you want to come up to the microphone, the podium, and then Russ Hoffman. Russ, you should be able to hear us.
Yes, I can hear you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. So I think it'd be best at this point to turn over to the committee, any questions, if you want to direct them to RIDE, or Russ, or members of the WED leadership team.
As you said, the Building Committee went through this quite in detail this afternoon, but if, does anybody, anyone on the committee have any questions for Mr. Notariani, for Civic Builders, or from RIDE? Vice Chair Burke, please.
The last time we brought this up and discussed it, we were still looking at conferring and agreeing with some language in the contract with our attorney. Has that been taken care of? Is that why we're moving this further now? Am I making any sense?
I don't think there is any, we don't have any contracts with anybody right now on this. This is all being sponsored at the RIDE level at this moment, so there's no, WED does not have any contract with Civic Builders or anybody really on this project at this time.
But we did have questions.
Yeah, there was questions.
And they were answered, and everything was satisfactory.
On what?
We had some, I can't remember. Sorry, I'm drawing a blank now. We had some contract issues. I think Sarah was involved, and it was very brief. It was just whether the contract, they sent us a contract that they wanted us to agree to, and we had some minor issues with it, and we had Sarah look at it. I was dreaming all of this.
Yeah.
All right.
I was going to say, no, I kind of remember that.
Right. There, yeah, Mr. Chairman, there were, at that previous meeting, there were a few questions, and we did confer with Attorney Rapport. We provided her with some questions prior to the meeting, to which she provided us with answers, and I think my recollection was it was sufficient to the questions that members of the committee had asked. This part of the process is, as we get into Phase 2, what we're looking at is, we're looking at the actual, the imprint of the school as it relates to the RIDE Prep High School. So what we're looking at this evening is, we're looking at some options that we would have, that the Building Committee voted on this afternoon, and you have in your folder, I believe, there's a PowerPoint, and if you go to page 7 of the PowerPoint, it discusses the P3 lease purchase options, and it provides scenarios.
Could I just, quickly?
Yeah.
We're just here to vote, well, they said we're just here, but we're going to vote tonight on whether to move forward with the second stage of this, and then we're going to get into the design phase. So that's what you're voting on tonight. Part of all the stuff, you're going to get the information, is where we started and where we're going, and what our information and our questions are all to, how we're going to handle this next phase. But everything is still strictly very preliminary. Like they said, there's no contract signs, but the one they wanted us to sign, she looked at and said it was, didn't have any adverse effects. It was really, really a generic contract, and we didn't sign that either, but it was just for informational purposes.
It was to identify the lease purchase.
Yes.
Language, and it was there. Nothing's been signed on this. We looked at the language because we're not at that stage yet.
Yes.
We're here to approve this next phase, which is basically, Sarah, you all right?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
But anyways.
So what we're looking at is to approve Phase 2, which is the location, and it's the collaboration with RIDE to build on the same foundation, a high school for RIDE and an elementary school for WED. The only thing that we will be sharing are utilities that would come into the foundation and into that. The two schools will be separate, and that's, and that's that.
So Scenario 2 has already been decided.
Excuse me, Vice Chairman. Chairman, so if I could reiterate, what you're voting on this evening is what Mr. Leclerc alluded to. The Building Committee has vetted the baseline scenario, Scenario 1, Scenario 2, and Scenario 3. And my apologies for not having it in the folder earlier, but it was something I didn't include because we were meeting this afternoon. That's how we were of the process in terms of timeline. So what the Building Committee has recommended, and what they've recommended is Scenario 1, minimal sharing, building sharing, utilities and foundation, as the chairman has indicated, and what you're voting on this evening is to recommend moving forward, so the Building Committee can pursue forward with the scenario off of this menu, if you will. If we do not pursue forward with this scenario and exploring it because of the deadline that, and I believe, Mrs. Kendrick can attest to this, if we don't pursue or continue to pursue at this point going forward, we're going to probably foreclose on our opportunity to move on to a Stage 3 submittal for February, if that's correct.
That's correct.
Because I'm sure you can see the outline in terms of time. It is going to be the middle of August now, and it's going to be a lengthy procedure. We just went through a Stage 3 application on a very abrupt timeline, and I can tell you, after working through that, it's difficult, and I think it'll be more difficult because this is a unique project because it's a partnership. So this evening, you're voting as to whether or not the Building Committee needs to pursue with Scenario 1, minimal sharing, and then from there, the Building Committee will go back and resume its work with civic partners and RIDE and the WED in terms of trying to explore further options as to how we would make this work. But if you vote against this this evening, it will end the work for us in terms of our exploring the partnership moving forward.
Correct. So it's Scenario 1, which is.
Unless, yes, unless, of course, you would like to pick a different scenario, but I wouldn't go with Scenario 1. That's the recommendation.
What the Building Committee agreed to.
Yes.
That's what we recommend, we recommended, but that's what's before us.
Yes.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for all the hard work that was put in. Thank you to the school committee, and the project continues to move along for both RIDE and for WED. Next, I'll ask you, Mr. Notariani, give us the facilities safety update. You're on a roll. Keep going.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the Facility Safety Subcommittee met on Friday, August 4th, at 12:15. We discussed the police MOA. We're still in the process of, well, we're still waiting to hear a response back from the solicitor in terms of coordinating a meeting with our attorney to go over any concerns with the MOA that we proposed a couple of months back.
He still hasn't gotten a hold of you yet?
No, Mr. Leclerc, we're waiting to hear back.
All right.
The second item was, we discussed Alice and the planning meeting that occurred this week, which Dr. McGee has already alluded to. Onto safety and security updates, we reviewed the Wensocket High School Door Alarm System, which will indicate to the main office if a student exits the building unauthorized. We talked about the district-wide FOB access control that we're almost done with the project. We're expecting to have it done probably by the end of September. We talked about window, middle school tinking of the windows and all the doorways here in the middle schools, the safety precaution. We talked about the master key system, which we have now in place in all the schools, and we've now turned that over to the building principals. They are responsible for ensuring that the master keys are accounted for, distributed, and collected, because if they're not, if it's not taken care of properly, we will have a security issue. So they were made aware of it the end of last year. We talked about the emergency sheds and having all of the supplies in place, which we do for the upcoming school year. Hopefully, we don't have to do any evacuations, but if so, I believe we're prepared. We talked about the emergency suitcases for the principals in case of an evacuation. Emergency plans were sent out to the building principals. Dr. McGee imposed a deadline of August 16th, have them back so we can review them. We discussed repeaters to be installed here at the middle schools so that the public safety radios for the police will work in both this building and the building next door. We're doing that in partnership with the police. The police were able to find a grant from the federal government. Working with Mr. Perrier, we were able to find financing. Additional radios for the high school career tech center, both the citizens, some of the schools, which will round out, I believe, the radio project and improve communication. We talked about the security camera installation at Harris sometime in August. We talked about security camera quote for Villanova Middle School and Hamlet Middle School, and we're proceeding with that. And we talked about replacement of the gym doors at the high school. In addition to that, we talked about facilities projects funded under the FEI grant, which is Facilities Equity Initiative. At Harris, between Harris, Pothier, and the high school, we received $3 million, thanks to Mr. Perrier and his application for that, which is going to go towards renovating at the library, media center, gym, and cafeteria at Harris and Pothier, and it will go towards gymnasium upgrades and locker room upgrades at the high school. In addition to that, we talked about the Wensocket High School Science Labs. We received $500,000 in grant funding to upgrade labs in the basement, which is going to be an ongoing project till December. We discussed where we are with the Wensocket High School Auditorium Project. We've resumed work with RGB Architects, and we're in the process of coordinating a schedule to start that work. And then we talked about the high school furniture purchase, which you approved in the consent agenda. Thank you. Every high school classroom will receive new student furniture, all desks, chairs, tables. Teachers receive podiums. There'll be new whiteboards in every room, and that was a joint effort. The entire admin team worked on making sure that we had all the appropriate furniture, size appropriate furniture, and we made sure that we had all the right furniture in the rooms. So the entire admin team worked very hard on making sure they had all of that. And the last item was Durham Transportation. We discussed the fact, and there'll be a further update in the my department update, but we discussed how there would be an upcoming meeting about bus routes. And that concludes the agenda for an update for the Facility Safety Subcommittee, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Notariani. Is there a problem in getting the furniture on time? When do you think we're going to get it, noting supply chain issues or whatever?
So that is a good question. So that, so we're going to, in order to save money and get furniture for all the rooms, the facilities department and the custodial staff are going to actually, not assemble, it'll come preassembled, but they will be doing the swap out of the furniture. And the arrival dates or the ETA for the furniture varies based on the item. We're expecting to see the chairs, the student chairs, all the chairs to possibly come in in the next three to four weeks. Those will be received in central receiving, and then in the evenings, when the students are out of the buildings and staff are out of the buildings, custodial staff will go in through in phases and replace the old chairs with the new ones. And they will do that, they will follow that plan for all of the furniture. I expect it to fully be completed if everything arrives throughout the fall. I expect it all to be completed by the end of December, pending when it arrives.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the facility, safety, and security update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, next four items on unfinished business were tabled, so we'll start with number one. I'll make a motion to remove from the table a discussion on approval on Bid 24-01 Custodial Supplies. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve Bid 24-01 Custodial Supplies. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Do we have any questions regarding this? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to remove from the table Bid 24-02 Medical Supplies. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
So Bid 24-02 is before us, and I'll make a motion to discuss and approve Bid 24-02 Medical Supplies. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Any questions? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to remove from the table Bid 24-03 Athletic Supplies. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Bid 24-03 is before us, so I'll make a motion to discuss and approve it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke.[1708.54] Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
And finally, I'll make a motion to remove from the table bid 24-04 athletic medical supplies. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Now, make a motion to discuss and approve bid 24-04 athletic medical supplies. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Now, we're going to new business. We've already discussed and approved number one, which was moved up. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid 24-05 educational staffing services. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Mr. Perrier, Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In front of the school committee this evening is, it's a little bit interesting. There's no fiscal approval that you'll be doing this evening. This was merely a bid that we put together in order to get some pricing for some needed outsourced positions for the upcoming fiscal year. You can see in front of you that we reached out for several group, groupings of employees, substitute teachers, paraprofessionals, PCAs, which are personal care attendants, school nurse teachers, tutors, behavioral interventionists, and I believe occupational therapists. I think we had speech therapists and physical therapists and psychologists as well. So it was quite a collection of people that we utilize over the years. What we're going to use is, this for is a starting point going forward. As the need arises for these positions throughout the fiscal year, we'll be able to reference back to this and use this as kind of a list to begin our search for these people in these positions as we deem them fit. When we approve, you will be presented a requisition like you normally will be if we do move forward with any of these positions. But just know that in order to lock these people in, we're going to be using these lists for this upcoming year. So just wanted to share that out with the school committee, and if you have any questions, I can answer them now.
Anyone? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas. Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the food service CEP slash NSLP application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa. Mr. Perrier.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I would like to, well, I was going to call up, but she's already there, introduce both Ashley Plant and Kristin Morello from Sedexo Food Services. They're going to be here to talk a little bit about this exciting opportunity that I think we have as a district in front of us tonight. So let me, let me just kind of kick things off. This evening, the school department will be deciding on one of three different pricing models for next fiscal year for our food service program. One is to remain as is with the current pricing. One is to increase prices by a nominal amount to, in order to reach our guaranteed return that we have with Sedexo. And finally, the most exciting model, and the one that I am going to be suggesting, is to move to the CEP program. Now, we've talked about that a little bit. That is community eligibility program. This will allow us to feed our students in Windsocket both breakfast and lunch for no charge to them. So it's going to be free lunches and breakfast throughout the district. Every student, every school will be covered. Let me turn it over to Ashley first to kind of talk about the, the budget issues that we'll be looking at or the, the budget projections we have for each one of these models. So I'll turn it over to you first.
Thank you. Good evening, school committee. We are here with three budget models that we have presented to you tonight. One is the as-is budget. So this is the current pricing at free, reduced, and paid meals, and it shows a return of $4.28 with, under our guarantee of $83,000. The next pricing model is an increase to get us to our return of the 5.11 guarantee that we have contractually with the Windsocket Education Department. And that increases prices for the elementary level at, to $2.40. And just to put that into perspective, our current pricing is $1.75 at the elementary level, so that is a substantial increase to our families. And the secondary level, so middle and high school students would see an increase from $1.85 to $2.50. The third pricing model that I wanted to present was the CEP. Now, we are using the 82.6% free model that RIDE has given to us. We spent many, many weeks going through the data, ensuring that this is the most accurate data that RIDE has presented to us, and it is correct. So that means that out of the entire district, if we have 1,000 meals that we serve in one day, 82% of them would be reimbursed at the federal reimbursement rate at free. The remainder of that population would be reimbursed at the paid rate. So since everyone is now, if you choose to go CEP, eating at the free rate, they do not bring money towards the cashier. So you have no revenue coming in for those paid meals, whereas right now, you do have some revenue coming in. So that is why you will see that we would be under our guarantee at 222, by $222,000, which is substantial. However, the meals served in each model are standardized. So I base this, we base this model off of what we currently served this past school year. That was us reverting back to a free, reduced, and paid model, whereas in previous years, everyone ate for free. So our participation level did decline, okay? Because now students are having to come up with this money at the register for lunches. I hope that these meals would increase if we do move to a CEP model. That's the goal. That's the hope. It's not a guarantee, though. So these are the models presented to you. You also have a meal price comparison model that was given to you from 2011 to 2023, what our meal prices have been over the years. They've been substantially low. Obviously, we stalled at 2019, 2020 with the $1.75, $1.85 COVID hit. Now, we would need to increase because every year, at minimum, you are supposed to increase by 10 cents. So no matter what, we would have to most likely increase prices if we do not move to CEP.
Yeah, the other benefit of the model is, once you start with CEP, the free and reduced applications go away for the October 1st date. You also eliminate all of the extraneous charges for the kids who aren't paying for the meals. So when we're in the free, reduced, and paid model, even if students don't pay ultimately getting a free meal, we may not get the cash for you. So you end up with outstanding debt that has to be cleared at the end of June every year. It puts an unfair burden on the students, given the fact that we provide almost everything else, and then we may get to the register and you may have a student who, they don't have the opportunity to bring that money in, so it's a choice of eating or not eating because they are going to end up getting charged, and they're going to have to pay that debt or be asked for that money. So the CEP, you know, it, it really puts you in a, in a, in a great light. It'll put you in a leader role in the state of Rhode Island. I think others will follow you. I, I know we had those discussions this week. And I think these are conservative estimates under the CEP model because we were using the free, reduced, and paid counts from this year to base the original budget model until this was proposed. Once people start realizing that they can eat for free without that charge hitting their account, I think you'll see us trickle back to where you were during your COVID meals because when it was free for COVID, we're served exponentially more meals. So I, I think it's a good thing for kids, and I, I really do think financially, you'll, you'll be in a good position as we move forward and implement this and highlight it and market it.
I have a little bit more. Thank you, Ashley. Thank you, Kristin. Yeah, I, I just wanted to point out, the, the one big hangup that I've had with the CEP program is really our free and reduced number is tied to the Rhode Island Funding Formula. They have fixed this, this legislative session. The Rhode Island Funding Formula is now tied to SNAP. So the biggest reservation I've had from moving to CEP has now been removed. As Sedexo pointed out, we could potentially be coming in under the guarantee that we have with the contract. I, I would think that the school committee and myself, we would like to work with Sedexo as we go through this year because we have really changed how they originally bid on this contract five years ago. We fundamentally changed all the calculations that went into the contract when this was bid on. So I think we should work with them and maybe potentially, I, I think they're underselling the, this a little bit. I think our breakfast and lunch is going to really exponentially increase. So I don't think we're going to be as under guaranteed as we are here. That's my personal opinion. I know they were, they didn't want to come out and say it, but I, but I will. But even if we do come in a little bit short, I think we may want to extend some leniency to Sedexo on this because, again, as, as I mentioned earlier, we fundamentally changed how they've built their budgets and what they can provide us on the original RFP when we did this four years ago. So, so I just did want to point that out, and, and I did want to voice my opinion that I think CEP is, is the best model for the district. I think it's a very exciting opportunity we have here. We, as I, far as I know, will be the first district to move to an entirely CEP model for the district, and I think this is a great thing for the, for the city of Windsocket, for the students of Windsocket. And it, it's something that we should really be trumpeting, that, that this is a really, this could be a potential game changer because, you know, it's very important that we're, we're teaching the students, providing for them socially, emotionally. But I, I think it really comes down to, if the, the students are hungry, I, I don't think you're going to be able to, to teach them. It's just a, a basic fact here. So I think this eliminates a lot of the problems that they mentioned with the free and reduced lunches, those difficult decisions that may have to be had. And I think getting back to the model that we were running during COVID would be a fantastic boon to the district.
Mr. Perrier, under the, this CEP program, all of our kids are going to eat for free?
Correct.
If we look at them, so could you explain to me the pricing model? And how does that, you, you, you mentioned, or I thought you mentioned, that there's no additional cost to us at the, at the bottom line? But maybe you can explain the pricing model and how this thing works, just so I can understand it a little bit better.
Well, it, it's a federal, it's a federal program.
Right.
So we're reimbursed for the lunches that we serve. And it's based on our SNAP number, and we get a factor on top of that, and that's how they come to the money that we serve. So Sedexo and their contract guarantees us a certain return every single year. So we're going to be profitable at the end of the year, but we're not going to be reaching the guaranteed number that Sedexo has in the contract. So there's going to be no additional expense. This is a self, this will be self-paid for within a nutrition fund. We're not going to have to go into the general fund to support this. We're not going to have to go out for any other grant or revenue source in order to support this. Based on the information that we have, this is going to be entirely self-sufficient. It's going to be, it's part of a federal program, and, and a lot of districts are moving to this model, particularly in Massachusetts right now. There are, there are several districts in Massachusetts that are using this. There are districts in Rhode Island who have implemented it somewhat. They haven't embraced it entirely. And again, as a finance director, the biggest problem that we've had in Rhode Island really points back to the funding formula. And there's been hesitation across the state to move to this because you're jeopardizing state funding, which is, in our, our case, the number one revenue stream for the entire district at 75%. So it's certainly something that we haven't wanted to jeopardize, but with the changes to the state legislation, I think it's time to move forward with this model, and, and we could be a showcase for this, for the state of Rhode Island.
I agree. Any comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is something we've discussed for the last several years. I know in our Health and Wellness Committee, Subcommittee, we've talked about this. So I'm excited that we are moving to it this year. And I think it's not just a nutritional upgrade. I do think it's also an educational upgrade. As Mr. Perrier said, if students do not have obstacles to getting a healthy meal, then they're going to have a better opportunity of doing well academically in the classroom. And we ensure that they will have that opportunity by giving all of them the opportunity for the free meals. So I, I wholeheartedly support this. I'm excited about it, and I'm glad we finally moved to it. So great job there.
This, this also can help with attendance, especially now if families know that their children don't have to pay for lunch and, or breakfast, and food will be available in school, at their school. We may see more of them attend just from the sheer fact that the kitchen is open, which is, which is great. Any other comments? Mrs. Costa.
So I, I just want to say, like, I, I think this will be a great program too because that really kind of hit me when you said these kids come up to the register and they have to pay, and they have to decide whether or not they want to eat or try to come up with the money. I don't think any child should have to be put in that position. It's really sad because we shouldn't have to look at our child and be like, ah, you got to pay for that. Ah, you can't eat. We're just going to watch you starve. And we should never do that to any child. So I think this is going to be a great idea.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just one more follow-up.
Vice Chair Burke.
Mr. Perrier. Mr. Perrier, could you explain why Windsocket District qualifies for this? Because it's my understanding not every district would qualify for it? Am I wrong?
I think, I think every district, am I, am I right? Not every district does? Nah, well.
Look at this.
It has to do, yeah, it has to do with our SNAP number. Based on that information, that's how the qualifications come about. And, and because SNAP is, is high here in this district, once you factor in that, that factor you put on top of the percentage, that's how you get to the, the 82.66% free. And that's how we're reimbursed is based on that.
Well, thank you for that because I think, I think the community would want to understand, you know, why we're able to do this because it's, it's, it's necessary. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
I just have one follow-up question. I, I think this is a great program. Anything that can remove stress from our families and our children is great. But for a long time, we were told this was not a good option for two reasons. One was the statewide funding formula, and we know they've changed that to SNAP. What about Title I? Title I had been requiring those applications in terms of the grants.